Welcome to this week's edition of the Porter County Perspective. This week, we are featuring candidates from the Dunland School Board election. All candidates facing opposition were invited to participate. If you are a candidate and would like to participate in the interview, contact WDSO by calling 219-983-3777. Up first is candidate Roy Darnell.
This is the Dunland School Board Candidate Questionnaire. I am Grace Stockhausen and this is-
I'm Audrey White.
And then we're with-
Good morning, I'm Roy Darnell.
Okay. So, tell us a little bit about yourself, length of time in community, occupation, education, family, stats, kids in Dunland schools, etc.
Well, as of next month, I've lived here forty-one years. I was born in Chesterton, graduated from the old Chesterton High School twenty-two years ago with an honors diploma. After high school, I went on to Purdue University, graduated in two thousand and five with a degree in civil engineering. Met my wife at Purdue, married her in two thousand and six, who also attended Jackson Township Schools, Westchester, and graduated from Chesterton High School. She's also a teacher at Westchester now. I have a son Cooper, he's ten, attends Liberty Elementary School. I have a son Miles, he's thirteen, attends school at Chester Middle School. I have two nieces also in the school district, one here at the high school, one at the middle school. Put myself through college working as a union laborer in an excavation company here in Chesterton on summer winter breaks, as well as worked at weekends on the steel mills when I came home. I'm currently a chief estimating engineer at one of the largest earthmoving demolition utility companies in the state. In our free time, we really like to go camping, hiking, and fishing around the area.
So what do you think a school board member does? And how do you view the relationship of teachers, the administration, and the school board in terms of hierarchy and goals?
Well, there's three main areas for meeting with different teachers, principals, as well as administration the past week, to review, set, and change policy. They also evaluate the performance of the superintendent, and they oversee the finances and budgets of the school corporation. I think it's very important for board members to work as a team with the superintendent. Superintendent will collaborate with his team of administrators and other professionals, and administrators will collaborate with teachers and others in the buildings. Also think it's important that each level works collaboratively with each other to create and ensure success with districts initiatives.
What experience, education, and/or attributes do you have that will add value to the board?
I believe I'm the best candidate for the Liberty seat on the Dunland School Board because, basically, I've lived here all of my life, which I think helps with knowing different people around the area, what their expectations are for the school corporation. And I think it's a luxury that I've attended these great schools. Not only have I attended Dunland schools, but so has my mother, my uncles, my grandma actually graduated from the old Liberty School over there. And I have no reason to leave this area. Other reasons are, my field of expertise as a chief estimating engineer provides me with a skillset to review plans for upcoming future, upcoming and future capital projects, provide insights to cost-saving measures, as well as review projects. Most professionals in my field of expertise only look to see if a project meets the requirements of the municipality that it's being constructed in. Almost always overlook the major constructibility issues that are in plain sign of drawings that will cost the school corporation thousands of dollars in extras. I still know some, many of the capital projects, many people say that they're short-lived, but I believe they're going to go on for a long time to keep the school corporation up to par with the other schools. Lastly, if I'm elected, I don't just plan to be on the board for one term. My children have many years to be in the school corporation. I also have nieces and nephews that are three and four years old that still put me with many years of hopefully contributing. And I also don't currently serve on any other boards, so I can put all my spare time towards the school corporation here.
There are some who oppose, others who support the new capital campaign project within the Dunland School Corporation. Where do you stand on this issue?
I'm a hundred percent in support of these capital projects. I think when people make decisions of where they're going to start a family in the school system, plays a huge role in decision-making process. Our schools need to be modern-looking, energy-efficient, that'll save us a lot of money, and have the best technology that money can buy, best sports and extracurricular activities, like the robotics club, this radio station I was part of years ago. And they need to present themselves as the premier learning facility in the area. The school systems surrounding us have already done major capital projects, and it's time for us to catch up and pass them. The large jobs I've done at Purdue University, University of Notre Dame, Val Brizo University, Indiana University, I know firsthand that the best and nicest facilities attract the highest and brightest students.
Many parents are concerned about their children being protected to be their authentic selves at school. What does that mean to you and how will you address those issues?
I think the students that attend the Dunland schools from all walks of life need to express herself differently. If a student does not feel comfortable while at school, they cannot be successful in the classroom. All students should be encouraged to be themselves, not try to fit into a specific mold or stay in shadows of the others. If everyone was thought to be the same exact way, there would never be change and better advancements in society.
In the past, there were outbursts from some parents over the mask mandate during COVID, allowing gay pride and BLM flags in classrooms. Where do you stand on these two issues and how would you have addressed them?
Well, I know the mask topic was a very contentious time in school board meetings that I attended and with my wife. I believe the Dunland School Corporation made the right decision to abide by the governor's mandate and follow the direction of CDC. These decisions were made in the best interest of all the individuals that work at the Dunland schools and attend them to keep the children in the classroom. While I support groups like Black Lives Matter and the pride groups and what those flags represent, I do not believe these flags should be displayed in a classroom setting. My reasoning is, not that I don't disagree with them, I just think letting these flags hang in the room allows other groups to bring in and display flags that may offend these groups as well. It's to maintain a comfortable learning environment for all students. I think just the American flag and state flag should be displayed at this time.
There is discussion at the state level of having school board members declare their political party membership. Where do you stand on this?
I believe school board members should be in a partisan position. Politics nor party lines need to be involved in the decision-making process with a school board member. Decision need to be made in the best interest of the corporation, not just opposition of the parties. The school board members need to be able to work as a cohesive unit, not along party lines.
And for our final question, why should someone vote for you?
I believe people should vote for me because I've lived here all of my life and experienced the Dunland schools. I know what type of education you can get here. When you leave the Dunland School Corporation and you take a different field of expertise, maybe engineering, law, anything in the science, you show up to university, you're by far ahead of the other students from different school corporations. Personally, with the school, a lot of people from different smaller schools, equal schools, or avellavictorians at other schools, they are no longer in the work field that they wanted to go to school for because the skillset here at Chesterton High School really prepares you for college. You have a good degree here, you go to college, you're gonna, it's going to be very easy for you to pass your classes in my experience and other experiences with other people in the school with, so. I believe I want to uphold what we have here and continue to grow this school system to be one of the premier schools in the area.
Alright, so thank you for coming in today.
Okay, thank you.
So, my name is Grace Stockhausen, this is-
Hi, I'm Beth Maling.
So, this is about the Dunland School Board Candidates Questionnaire. So, tell us a little bit about yourself, like your length of time in community, occupation, education, family stats, kids in Dunland schools, the works.
Okay, so, I am running for the Liberty Township position on the Dunland School Board. I've lived in the Dunland School Corporation for sixteen years. I have been married to Joel for nineteen years, and we have Brody, who is a junior at the high school, and Elliot, who's an eighth grader at the middle school. I grew up in Northwest Indiana in Dyer, I went to Andrian High School, and then to Butler University, where I got my doctorate in pharmacy degree in two thousand and one. I've worked as a pharmacist for over twenty years, currently am working with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois, and my job currently is to manage the pharmacy benefits for the Boeing Corporation.
So, what do you think a school board member does? And how do you view the relationship of teachers, the administration, and school board in terms of hierarchy and goals?
Okay, so the school board has three primary goals that I've been told as I've been doing my research for this position. So, the first primary role of a school board member is to hire, evaluate, and if necessary, fire the superintendent. The second role is to set policy and to evaluate those policies. And then the third role of a school board member is to set and evaluate the finances. I feel like a school board member, in order to be successful, needs to do those three things, keeping in mind the people that will be affected. So, the families within the Dunland School Corporation, the teachers, and the students. I feel that it would be my role as a school board member to, as a Liberty Township rep, not only keep those people in Liberty Township in mind, but also all of the Dunland representatives. So, in talking with the teachers, talking with students, parents, families, understanding what their concerns are, what their priorities are within the system, making sure that we as a board would be making those decisions with them in mind. So, you asked how I view the hierarchy. I view the superintendent is the ultimate decision-maker, the person in charge. Then comes the board, and there should be a good working relationship between the superintendent and the board so that they're able to make policies with the best intentions in mind. I feel then underneath the board, there needs to be a working, a good working relationship with the administrators, the staff, the teachers, everybody at the schools. So again, taking feedback from those groups of people and keeping that in mind when you're making policies, when you're setting the finances, just to make sure that everybody is benefiting from those decisions that you're making.
Alright, what experience, education, and/or attributes do you have that will add value to the board?
So, my experience, I have, as I said, I have two kids that have been in the Dunland School Corporation for ten years now. And with them going through elementary, intermediate, middle, and now high school, I've been involved every step of the way. So, I have been PTO president at the elementary, middle, and intermediate school level. I participated in the Leader in Me Parent Program at Liberty Elementary School. I'm currently on the Olveus Anti-Bullying Program Leader Committee. I'm also on the Parent Advisory Board at the middle school. I've done sports and band boosters at the high school. I worked as a substitute teacher during COVID at all of the schools. So, I've been involved at all of the different levels. The attributes that I feel like would make me a good board member, I have had a variety of different leadership positions, both within my job as well as outside of my career. So, I've had leadership roles, as I just said, with the PTO. I've been active in my church and have had leadership roles on the Parent Advisory Board. And then, in my career, I've been a manager, so I've managed people and have held various leadership roles within my career.
Alright. There are some who oppose, others who support the new capital campaign project within the Dunland School Corporation. Where do you stand on this issue?
I feel that the capital project is actually twenty years overdue. I feel that the building, especially with splitting into the two middle schools, is necessary. When you look and you talk to students and families in the Dunland School Corporation, they feel that the middle school experience is the worst out of all of the experiences. And I feel that a lot of that occurs simply because of the fact that you have a thousand seventh and eighth graders in one building. That building was not designed to hold a thousand seventh and eighth graders. They're at an age where they need to have more one-on-one staff-to-student ratio. So, I feel that that is a benefit to splitting into those two middle schools. I feel like another benefit of splitting into the two middle schools is the opportunities that those kids will be given by having two campuses. So, you'll have additional sports teams, you'll have additional extracurricular activities, you'll have additional music and fine arts opportunities by having those two separate campuses. I also feel that the way that they're, that the board has chosen and the administration has chosen to do it, by keeping the separate houses, so you're going to have your fifth and sixth graders separate from your seventh and eighth graders, you're still maintaining that intermediate school experience while allowing the older kids to have that, that middle school experience.
Alright, so, many parents are concerned about their child being protected to be their authentic selves at school. What does this, what does this mean to you and how will you address those issues?
I feel like while a child is at school, especially in the middle school and high school years, it's a time for students to really explore who they are. I feel like the Dunland School Corporation has done a good job as far as embracing the whole student and letting students explore who they are through extracurricular activities, through a variety of classes that are being offered. I have heard parent concerns about maybe this exploration being allowed to go too far. I argue that if a child can't be their authentic self in school, then where can they be their authentic self? You figure that a student is spending a majority of their waking hours within the school building with their peers, so they need to be able to feel safe, to feel comfortable, and to explore what is their true authentic self. This is developmentally when they're supposed to be doing that. And if they don't feel that they're able to do that at school, I feel that we end up with greater problems. I feel the administration has also done a good job as far as not taking, not necessarily taking a stand on some issues that have been brought forward, but instead maintaining a nonpartisan look at it, trying to keep politics out of some of these issues, and instead using the laws that are in place and what other schools in the state of Indiana and around the country have faced as precedent for what they're doing here at Dunland.
A segue into that, in the past, there were some outbursts from some parents over the mask mandate during COVID, allowing gay pride and BLM flags in classrooms. Where do you stand on these two issues and how would you have addressed them?
So, as far as the mask mandate, at the time, the mandate was being handed down by the governor. So, that was a requirement for any educator in the state. If the school corporation were to go against that, then they risked facing fines and losing state money by not upholding that mandate. At the time of the mask mandate, everybody was in a new situation. They were working with the evidence as it was emerging. We were in totally unchartered waters. And I think everybody was just doing what they could with the information that was being, that was available at the time. I feel like our school corporation did a good job of reacting to information as it was becoming available, changing policies as the governor changed his policies, and trying to stay on the forefront, again, keeping students and teachers and their mental health, as well as their educational needs and keeping kids in school. That was the forefront of their decisions the whole time, is making sure that kids could stay in school. As far as the Black Lives Matter and the pride flag situation, I have a really hard time with how that was handled. I feel like the flag situation was handled in a one-sided manner and hasn't been uniformly applied across all situations. As far as recent matters that have been brought to the school board, I feel that the board has been very strong in making sure that they're upholding what current guidelines have in place. So, they have referenced Title IX as the guiding force behind what's being done right now with bathroom, sports, and locker room policies. And until and unless those change, the board and the administration has created a stance that they'll stand behind that in order to avoid costly lawsuits and fines that could be placed on the school corporation.
Alright, there is a discussion at the state level of having school board members declare their political party membership. Where do you stand on this?
I don't think that politics belongs in the school board. I feel that the school board is solely responsible for making decisions around the school corporation. So, education should be nonpartisan, and the school board members should remain nonpartisan with a focus on providing the best education possible for the community in which they serve.
Alright, and why should someone vote for you?
The main platform that I'm running on is that I'd like to provide a new perspective for the Dunland School Corporation. So, in my pitch, I offer three ways that I can offer a different perspective over the two people that are running against me. The first is that I'm a woman, I'm a mom, the two people that are running against me are both men. Right now, there's only one woman on the five-member school board. Her, her seat is up for reelection. If she were not to win, there would be no mothers' view on the school board. And then, women would still remain underrepresented at twenty percent representation within the board. The second way is because, as I said earlier, I'm a pharmacist. The two men that are running against me are running on platforms that they're both engineers, so can help out with the capital project. I argue that the capital project is over in approximately eighteen months, and until we have another capital project, really aren't needing construction and engineering expertise. But as a pharmacist, I feel like I have developed a number of skills that I explained earlier that could be useful throughout the entire four years. The third way that I feel like I can offer a different perspective is because I'm not a Porter County or Chesterton native. I know it sounds really odd that I would bring that up. I was, as I said, I was born in North, born in Northwest Indiana. I did grow up here, I left for a little while for school and for early career, and then came back sixteen years ago to start our family. Right now, of the five members that are on the board, three graduated from Chesterton High School, the fourth taught in the district for over thirty years. So, of your five-member board, you're not getting a lot of outside influence. I feel like because I've been outside of the Dunland area for a majority of my life, I can bring new thoughts, new insights, and a different view into our school corporation.
Alright, and that was the last question, so we're done.
Well, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Up next, Phil Graylik.
This is the Dunland School Board Candidate Questionnaire. I'm Grace Stockhausen.
I'm Audrey White.
And this is-
Phil Graylik.
Alright, and to start, tell us a little bit about yourself. So, length of time in community, occupation, education, family stats, kids in Dunland schools, etc.
Well, I have been in the Dunland school system, I've lived here for twenty-seven years now. My wife is a lifelong resident, I met her, we got engaged. I'm from Michigan City, I went to Rogers High School out there, and she was like, there's no way I'm moving to Michigan City. So, we wound up living out here and have been here ever since. I went to Rose Holman Institute of Technology. I earned a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, and I'm a professional engineer. So, I can stamp plans and, you know, projects, once I review them and stamp them, can be built. I've been doing that for, well, since I graduated from college, so almost thirty years now, I've been doing that. I've worked on projects around the world, I designed a highway in Azerbaijan, I designed a small city in Libya, helped with the power grid in Guam. I have designed projects from Florida to Chicago and from Maryland, all the way to California.
Alright.
What do you think a school board member does? And how do you view the relationship of teachers, the administration, and the school board in terms of hierarchy and goals?
I guess one thing I didn't mention in my background is, I'm a United States Army veteran. And I was an officer, I was a platoon leader, and I, I learned in there to rely on the people under me because when you're a, you know, I went through ROTC to pay for Rose Holman, even back then, it was a very expensive school. So, the military paid eighty percent of my tuition to be able to go there because my family couldn't afford it, I couldn't afford it. But I learned the chain of command. And, you know, one of the most difficult, I guess, experiences of my life was being a twenty-two-year-old second lieutenant and meeting my platoon sergeant for the first time, who had been in the military for almost thirty years. He knew, he had forgotten more than I knew as a second lieutenant, and learning to rely on him taught me a lot, that, you know, there are people, even though you may be in charge of them, they know a lot of things you don't know. And I think, to me, that relates to the school board in the fact that the school board manages the budget, obviously. You know, we are, they are fiscally responsible for that. They're at a policy level, though. So, we have to rely on the teachers and the administration to actually carry out the work the way I would have to rely on my platoon to actually carry out the orders that I gave them. And I see this a lot in the same way, it's more of a policy thing, but you have to rely on the professionals and their opinions and what they're telling you they need. And you got to make sure that you get them what they need to do their jobs.
So, what experience, education, and/or attributes do you have that will add value to the board?
Well, the one I just talked about. You know, so, so, okay, in my career in general, I understand, and, you know, the, the idea, I was approached by a couple gentlemen that, you know, knew about the capital improvement program and all the work going on with the school. They knew the only board member that is on the, on the board right now that has any construction background is leaving. And they approached me and said, hey, would you consider doing this? Because of my extensive background and my expertise in all types, all different types of construction, I think that'll be, you know, valuable to the board. When I was a consultant, the firm I worked for, and this was ten years ago, charged two hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour for me to work on someone's project. So, today, those rates are over two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for someone with my experience. And to have someone like that on the board that can review change orders, you know, look at the plans, and listen to what the, the construction managers are saying, and, you know, has been there before. I've worked for NDOT on the state side, I've been a county engineer. I'm currently the city engineer of Hobart, but I've also worked for a consulting firm and a general contractor. So, I, I've been on all sides of the table in the last thirty years, and I understand the process. So, I, I think I'll be invaluable in that regard. But I also, like I said, I, I understand, you know, how to manage people who have a, an expertise and knowledge beyond me. And I'm, I'm realistic enough to recognize that I don't know everything. And I use the phrase that I don't know what I don't know a lot because that's true, we don't know what we don't know. So, I know I have a lot to learn, but I've, in my, right now, I'm on three other boards because of my position as city engineer. And they manage multimillion-dollar budgets, we make, you know, hard decisions that affect people's lives, you know, raising taxes or sewer rates or, you know, things like that, that happens. And you got to know how to deal with it, you got to be able to keep your cool in a meeting. So, like on a, a construction project, a highway project that, you know, maybe NDOT is funding, they have a public hearing process you have to go through, and the public gets to stand up and ask all kinds of questions. And even if I know the answer, I can't answer them. I have to sit there quietly, I have to take notes, we write everything down, and all we can say is, we're going to respond to you in writing. And that's hard to do. And I've been to a number of school board meetings now, and it seems similar to what they do when they have public comment. They just, they sit there, they take it in, they receive that information, and then, at the end of the meeting, each board member, you know, has the opportunity to speak and say something, but they don't have that, that debate where even if they know the answer to a particular parent's question, they don't, they don't just answer it. And, and that's hard to do, and it's a skill that I personally had to learn. I mean, it, it takes, you know, sometimes some real patience to sit there when you know the answer and you just can't say it right now. So, I, but I think that I, I just have a well-rounded background, I've done a lot of things, I've been a lot of places, have not been on a school board before, so, yeah, we'll see how this goes.
There are some who oppose, others who support the new capital campaign project within the school, Dunland School Corporation. Where do you stand on this issue?
Well, I, I think, like I said before, we have to give the, the staff and the administration the resources they need. And if they're, they came to the board and said, we need these things, and from some of the teachers I've talked to, specifically at Westchester Intermediate, they're full, they have no more room. All their rooms are being used. So, what do we do if we don't expand those schools? You know, some of the other ones were, as I understand it, were old and just, they needed the updates. But space is definitely a consideration. I, you know, I've reviewed the plan, I have questions about it myself that I, I'll have to get into if I'm elected, and, you know, I, I will do that research, I'm an independent thinker, so I will, I want data. I want to look at why decisions were made and, and go from there. But right now, I see the need for it, but I can't really speak to, you know, the size of it and what they're doing. I have, I have a couple things I noticed on the plans that I have questions about that, you know, I'll ask if, if I am elected.
Alright. Many parents are concerned about their children being protected to be their authentic selves at school. What does that mean to you and how will you address those issues?
Well, I, I think that the, the parent-child relationship is super important. And I think that if there is a problem where a, a student feels they can't be themselves at home, there's a deeper problem there in the, the family relationship than, you know, what appears on the surface. And I would hope that, that we could find a way to address the underlying issues. I, I do believe that parents are the ultimate authority and have the final say over their children. They are their children. And I remember, you know, being a teenager and thinking, you know, I, I knew it all. And I remember, you know, being a teenager and thinking, you know, I I knew it all. Um, and you really don't lose that until you're probably in your thirties. And then you realize, you know, um, how little you actually knew. Uh, and we all look back on those days and and think that. Um, so I I think we have to improve the bonds there. We have to improve the the parent uh child relationship and um help them to be who they are with their parents and seek their their parents' involvement in that.
Um, in the past, there were outbursts from some parents over the mask mandate issue during COVID, allowing great gay pride and BLM flags in classrooms. Where do you stand on these two issues and how would you have addressed them?
Well, okay, so on masks, um, again, I'm an engineer. I I, my second language is mathematics. I am a very scientific, logical person. And um, you know, from the beginning of COVID, when, and I I mean, from twenty, December of twenty nineteen, I was watching this, it's kind of a thing of mine. I've been a bit of a germaphobe since the swine flu, which I don't even know, you know, if you remember when that was. But I was on a a construction project that um we had, it was in Lafayette. They were rebuilding their uh highway department garage. And the superintendent of the project and I, we had a progress meeting, we had the plans out on the tailgate uh of my truck. We were talking about the different building issues and some change orders. You know, we shook hands and we left that day. And I found out a few days later that that night he was hospitalized with the swine flu. And I was like, oh, my goodness, I was standing right there with the guy, you know, we were like touching the plans, touching the tailgate. Um, you know, using the same pen, things like that. So um, anyway, that was just an interesting experience that I've had. So I've been big on hand sanitizers and and things ever since that, thank goodness, I didn't, I didn't contract it. Um, but I, and and right before COVID hit, I had finished a book called The Next Pandemic, which was written by a a gentleman who worked for the CDC for forty years. Um, and if you ever want to, you know, be scared, uh read that, it is, it is amazing what is out there. So after all that, you know, COVID comes along. And so I started doing my own research and I I'm looking not just at what, you know, is available here in the United States, because it didn't start here. So I started looking uh, you know, at what information was available out of China, what was happening in Italy, why it was happening, what was working, what wasn't working. Um, I think I was the first person in Hobart City Hall to wear a mask. But I was also the first person, I think, to take it off. Because in the beginning, when everyone was saying, the CDC especially was saying, you know, it's on surfaces. You gotta sanitize your groceries, you gotta sanitize your Amazon boxes and all these things. Um, I was already seeing the reports that, hey, this is airborne, you know? And I knew from people that I knew whose uh, you know, kids were nurses and doctors that hospitals were preparing for an airborne epidemic, even though the CDC was behind and saying it was on packages. Um, and then ultimately, when it became clear that cloth masks just don't work uh and the data started showing that, that they they really don't even slow the spread. If you want, if you want to be effective, you need a KN ninety-five that's properly fitted. And if you can smell something like a a candle, an air freshener, it's not fitted and it's not gonna work. Um, so ultimately, I guess, on the mask issue, uh I think we have to be very careful. I think that that some kids were actually harmed by that. And you can see that if you look again at the data of the states like Florida, who were limited in their mask mandates and compare them to states like New York and California, where they really extended the mask mandates. And now you're seeing a rise in speech therapy needs in those states that that had the extended mask mandates. Um, flags to me are a little, I guess, of a, an interesting issue. Because as a veteran, you know, I drive down the road and I see an American flag up without a light on it at night. I don't like that, you know, if you have a flag out, there's certain protocols that you're supposed to handle. Um, I understand, you know, that that people um are seeking support for their point of view. Um, they want to express themselves. I just, I, I'm not sure if a flag is necessarily the way to do it, but I'm not familiar with what happened. Because back when that happened, I uh, I wasn't even thinking about, you know, running for school board. My son's thirty-one years old, um, so he went to the Dunland schools. My grandson's nine years old, but he's in Crompoint. So uh, you know, I I'm experienced, I've I've had a son come through the schools here. Uh, but I don't have a child here now, so I'm catching up on a lot of that. Hope that answers your question.
There is discussion at the state level of having school board members declare their political party membership. Where do you stand on this?
I think it's obvious who's in what party anyway. So I think it's kind of a moot point. But um, I see both sides of the actual issue. I I see that, you know, the the general public and folks that I've talked to, as I've gone door-to-door and knocked, they they've asked me that question, you know, are you a Democrat or a Republican? I'm like, I can't answer that, this is a nonpartisan race. You know, I'm like, look at my Facebook page, look at my posts and you can see what I believe about different issues. It's out there, I'm not, not hiding what I believe by any means. I've got all kinds of people coming after me. Um, I would lean toward keeping it nonpartisan. Uh, a- and it's unfortunate that it's as political as it is. And and I didn't realize that coming into this, but the, I mean, there are just, there are some just vicious attacks that are coming from one political side. But when you drive down the road and you see, you know, a whole row of Democrat signs and then a school board member sign, you know whose party they are. And um, same thing, I mean, you can, you can tell which way I lean by, you know, who my signs are out there with. So uh, it's not like we're, we're all ignorant anyway. Um, but I wish things were less partisan.
Um, and for our final question, um, why would someone vote for you?
I I think I'm, I I think I'm almost an ideal candidate. Because like I said, my son has come through the schools. I've lived here for going on thirty years. It'll be, actually, it was, actually, it was twenty-seven years in October, so this month will be twenty-seven years. So I've been here a long time, you know, my son played Liberty Rec and uh played all, we played all kinds of baseball. Um, so I I I know the school system, I I know the people, I'm connected to the community. But I'm also not necessarily inside the educational system. Uh, I haven't done something like this before, but I think that's a strength. Because I've been on so many other boards. I I have so many other experiences that I can bring to the table, but I don't have any axe to grind. You know, I'm not after any particular program or coach or teacher or, you know, the superintendent or whatever. I don't have a policy agenda that I'm trying to drive. I just wanna make sure that that you all get the best education that you possibly can. And I, and I know that because, I'll tell you, you know, having a Rose Holman degree, it opened doors when I graduated. You know, people saw that on my resume and they were like, wow, you know, I, up until my class, Rose Holman had a one-hundred percent graduation uh placement rate. Every single senior who graduated from Rose Holman, until my class in nineteen ninety-five got a job. And there were some economic reasons, my class was the first one to not, I did, you know? But um, I understand that the value of that. I also think that that one of my, one of the issues that I believe in is the making sure that kids who are not going on to college are ready for life. Um, my son is the perfect example. While, you know, school came pretty easy to me, it did not to him. And college was not for him. Um, but today, he's a a, an extremely successful lineman with NIPSCO, so he works on the power lines. Um, and uh he makes far more money than I do and he didn't have to pay for a college education to do it. I just paid my student loans off a few years ago. You know, I mean, like I said, Rose Holman was expensive, even with ROTC, it was expensive. So there are options out there that I, as a student, a long time ago, never even knew. But there are jobs out there for people who, with just a high school diploma and a good work ethic, where you can make two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year without a college education. But my guess is that ninety-five percent of the students in the system have never heard that before. I know I didn't and my son didn't. He was pushed, you know, you gotta go to college, you gotta have a degree. He did one semester of college and he was like, Dad, this is not for me. Uh, and thank God, he did. He found what he's good at and what he loves to do. And we need to help young people find what they love to do and prepare them to do that. Not everyone has to go to college to be successful. The ones who want to and have that aptitude, I think Chesterton does a great job of getting them ready. You guys have an excellent school system and we need to keep that going. I just think it needs to be a little more well-rounded. Um, I think that's it.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
The last candidate to be featured in part one of WGSO's survey for the Dunland School Board is candidate Elena Lightfoot-Pohl.
All right, uh, so my name is Grace Stockhausen. I'm here for the Dunland School Board Candidate Questionnaire and this is?
Elena Lightfoot-Pohl.
Uh, and yeah, let's get started. Uh, so tell us a little bit about yourself, length of time in community, occupation, education, family stats, kids in Dunland schools, et cetera.
Well, I am thirty-eight years old and I live right here in Chesterton with my husband and two daughters. They they are eight and ten, both attend Dunland schools. Um, one elementary and one is now at Westchester Intermediate. I am a Dunland grad, I was a two thousand two CHS grad right here, second graduating class out of this school. Um, went to college for elementary education and I do have a master's in education also. I I'm a teacher, I currently work in a neighboring district in a third grade classroom. And we're involved in the community, been here, we we lived in Indianapolis for a number of years, but moved back in two thousand fourteen to raise our daughters here.
All right, um, what do you think a school board member does? And how do you view the relationship of the teachers, the administration and the uh school board in terms of hierarchy and goals?
As a school board member, my job is to work with the other members to hire and evaluate our superintendent. And also, we are in charge of policy governing, or you know, looking at policy, approving policy, changing policy when needed. Um, and then, you know, it's our job to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and how we're using those dollars in the district. Um, now, the hierarchy of the board, superintendent, administration, staff and community, community members, there is a chain of command. So we work alongside of our superintendent for certain things. And then a lot of the day-to-day that happens within the district doesn't not even really spill into our role as a board member. So when we have community members that kind of address us with things that um can be handled within that, in specific building or certain um directors in those, um, that in that capacity, it's our job to kind of um send those people to the people that can um take care of that. And then when it, when something is something, you know, an issue we need to address, then we kind of look at that as a board and along with the superintendent.
What experience, education and/or attributes do you have that will add value to the board?
I would say something that sets me apart from other board members is, I've kind of already mentioned that I am a CHS grad, which is not unique to me. But something that is unique to my position on the board is I am a current public school teacher. I think that my experiences as a public school teacher in other districts has helped me, especially in central Indiana, has helped me kind of see how other things are run and how um other districts are doing things. So when I moved back, I kind of brought that knowledge with me and, oh, I think, I thought we might be able to change things in certain areas for the better. I also think being a mom to two younger Dunland students has been, or is important. Cause I'm seeing that perspective of a parent, I'm living that day-to-day. I'm getting the robocalls, I'm reading emails as a parent. Um, I also have to say that being a teacher and parent in this post-COVID place, education is different. I mean, it's changed. We are, we have a different educational environment right now. Students are kind of coming in my classroom to us, different, you know, we're just, I think having to grapple with that as a current teacher and parent is helping me in my board position, make decisions and help kind of guide the district in a direction that is helpful.
Yeah. There are some who oppose, others who support the new capital campaign project within the school Dunland Corporation. I mean, Dunland School Corporation, where do you stand on this issue?
Oh, I'm fully supportive of the capital project. Um, and I, we, and and I say this as like the Dunland community are, we are very lucky, unfortunate to have had past board members that were um very debt adverse, like they were really took care of the district to make sure we were, they were good stewards of the money. So we are able to, they set us up to be in a unique position where we can do this huge capital project. Um, and I, you know, being someone who is really involved and I really try to pay attention to what's happening in education and general public education specifically. But we have to really understand that we are in a place in education that we have to, we're fighting for um enrollment, right? Like, we have to market ourselves in a way that we want people to be attracted to our community, attracted to our district. And this alone, being able to impact all buildings in a positive way and change, you know, be able to modify those learning spaces so all students in our district are able to benefit that from that, that's amazing. Um, I think that's going to be very beneficial for our community. Um, alongside of other things we have going on, like the middle school now going, or you know, down the road will be, come this healthy living campus that the YMCA is taking over. I think that is fantastic. Um, so and I am also a big fan of us going back to two middle school districts. Um, I, when I ran four years ago, I was hearing over and over again how um some of the parents were unhappy with how many transitions their students were making from the elementary to the intermediate, to the middle school, to the high school. And that will eliminate one transition. And I also think that um allowing us to kind of separate or, you know, keep those middle school grades five-eight smaller and in the same building for a longer time, even though we'll have like different wings and it'll be a school within a school. I think it's gonna help um with cultivating like a positive community. Like, they'll be there for a longer, they'll know their peers a little bit longer, they might, you know, um, I think it'll be a benefit to the culture of the buildings. I'm a big fan.
Um, many parents are concerned about their children being protected to be their authentic selves at school. What does this mean to you and how will you address those issues?
So as, as a teacher, you know, we understand that it's important for us to create healthy, safe and thriving schools, community within the classroom. To, part of that healthy aspect and that community environment is the ability for students to feel comfortable and feel like they're a valued member. So without having that, without being able to feel like your authentic self and be a valued member of the the classroom, you're not getting the learning environment that you need. So all students need to feel as if they can be their authentic selves to be that risk taker, to take, to be able to thrive in that community environment. So, back to um how I will address it, I mean, that kind of supporting um initiatives to help us create environments that are supportive, more tolerant of others. I think that's important um that we are, that we are supporting that. Because, you know, as a school district, we're looking at preparing students for life post-twelfth grade, right? Like whether they're going to be enrolling in um a school, going straight to employment or enlisting in some type of service. So with that, knowing those things, like people are leaving this community. They have to understand that it's important to be tolerant of others and be able to be successful beyond Chesterton schools.
In the past, there were outbursts from some parents over the mask mandate during COVID, allowing gay pride and BLM flags in the classroom. Where do you stand on these two issues and how would you have addressed them?
It's important to hear from our parents and community members. And they have a right to their, to their First Amendment rights. As a board member, sadly, we've come to a place where things that, in my opinion, should not be politicized, are being politicized. Equality should never be politicized, bottom line. So when we have parents or community members that are coming at us and are angry, upset about certain things, yes, we will hear them and listen to them, we'll follow laws and for certain situations. We also followed the prevailing science when it came to COVID and mask mandates. So even though parents were upset and angry, we did what was right for the entire district or that we felt was right and what we needed to do. As a community member and parent that also resides in this district, it's disheartening to see and hear the anger and just exclusionary like viewpoints people have. And what I will say about that is, I think, as a leader in the community and a person that's very in tune with public education and in education in general, I think I need to look at my role as helping educate the community to understand um how the- to understand um, how this misinformation is negatively impacting the larger district. But as a board member, you know, I am a one, one person on a five-person board where we are coming together to look at laws and policy to move forwards. I feel like there's a lot of work to be done to help the buy-in, right? Parent, community buy-in of why it's important for us to be a supportive community who does value all students that come into our buildings. Cause that is our job, is to give a free and appropriate public education to all students that live within our boundary. And to do that, that means we have to um, value all differences.
There is discussion at the state level of having school board members declare their political party membership. Where do you stand on this?
I am very opposed to that. I think it's really mind-blowing that we get to a place that, that we, our legislators feel like we need to declare a party. Um, because I don't believe that declaring a party, politicizing our role, governings, the district is, will be beneficial at all. I think that we should keep politics out of this arena. I think that, that's another thing that maybe voters or constituents need to be a little bit more informed about how that would negatively impact the district. So I am completely opposed to declaring a party. I think that is not a good idea.
Alright. And then um, last question, why should someone vote for you?
Well, a number of reasons. I'm not finished with the work I am doing with Dunland. So a lot has changed. Four years ago when I ran, I, I ran because I felt like I could bring my experiences and my role and, you know, being in touch with the community. I thought that and I still do believe that um, I can positively benefit the direction of the district. So much has changed in four years. We have so many great things happening in the district. I mean, as a part of the, the strategic plan, um, that really kind of gave us a focus on where we wanted to go. So we have, we're really focused on, you know, early childhood, bringing more early childhood education opportunities to the district. Like the Dun, the early, the Dunland Early Learning Hub. Amazing, right? Like we've got kids coming in. We have ready set kindergarten in the Dunland um, buildings. And that's like a ready, a kindergarten readiness program to get these kids ready for kindergarten. Um, we also have brought more like mental health support to the district. Um, we have adopted a social emotional learning curriculum. We have done, you know, the capital projects will, will greatly enhance our district. Um, there are just so many things that we've started to work on and we're not completed. And I am asking for voters to turn out and vote for me so I can finish the work that I feel like is so important here in Dunland. I also truly believe that it's important to have a parent like myself that's living the day-to-day. I'm absolutely invested in making this district the best it can be. You know, I am a classroom teacher and I feel that that's a great perspective to add to the board. I mean, we do have two other members that are retired Dunland um, employees and that's a great perspective. But right now in this, I mentioned it before, like this post-COVID place, it's important to kind of know the differences because there are some stark differences than there were a few years ago. Um, and I just kind of wanna touch on one big thing that um, is important. Kind of our, you know, earlier when I mentioned, like we, our job is to give a free and appropriate public education to all students. With that, we can't ignore the need to really address what's happening with the Porter County Education Service and our special needs students. And where we need to get to a place where they're being served in the best capacity and that those teachers are feeling valued because they are a huge value to our district and our students. And I think that's, that's another thing that I would want to work on and see through is whatever that looks like down the road, helping drive that initiative to a place where everyone feels good about how our special needs students are being served. So a lot, I just would say, you know, I need more time to finish the work that I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Alright, and that's it. Okay, that is it for this week's edition of the Porter County Perspective. I would just like to repeat that all candidates facing opposition were invited to participate in this survey. If you are a candidate and would like to participate, call WDSO at two one nine nine eight three three seven 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 and we will schedule you to come in for the interview. All these interviews, if you'd like to listen to them again, will be found on WDSO's YouTube page. This program was previously recorded.